We'll call the Willmar City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 16th, 2018. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so Judy, stick with me here. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Several.
The Caris Health Agreement will be number one. Municipal Utilities Grant Application will be number two. The formation of the Leisure Services Park, Leisure Services Board will be number three. The Recreation Department Ordinance will be number four. Sale of City Property will be number five, and those will come after consent.
The other one was the Community Amendment Joint Powers Agreement.
No, the creation of the Recreation Department Ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one, yes. So that will then be number six. Actually, I'm gonna move that to the, uh... I'm gonna move that to number thirteen, fourteen. Can you please remind me of that one?
Which one?
With those amendments to the agenda as presented, is there any others?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agendas, agenda as amended. Discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. That motion does carry. Next consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of July 2nd, Willmar Municipal Utilities Board minutes of July 9th, Caris Health Rice Memorial Hospital Board minutes of May 30th, application for exempt permit for Pennock Lions Club, a resolution adopting the Minnesota General Records Retention Schedule and adopt the electronic files as permanent retention method, state temporary liquor permits for the Willmar Lakes Rotary Club, and for council's acceptance, the border zoning appeals minutes of June 26th, the border zoning appeals minutes of July 9th, police department statistics for the month of June, fire department statistics for the month of June, and the accounts payable through July 11, 2018. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items as presented. Discussion.
Did you want to pull Rice Hospital?
It was my understanding, I was planning to pull the Caris Health Rice Hospital Board minutes of May 30th, but Mr. Scott said it wasn't necessary to do that, that the fact that we're taking action on the amendments later will not affect the, what was in the minutes before, so.
Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion resolution passes. Next, we have a recommendation from Willmar Municipal Utilities for a grant application for their water treatment plant. Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The Willmar Municipal Utilities is requesting that the council give consideration to concur with the submission of a grant application to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to assist with funding of our water treatment plant improvements that we have coming forward to the northeast treatment plant. Project right now is estimated at 8.5 million, plus engineering. Grant application could be somewhere between zero and 80% of total project cost, not to exceed $7 million. So the commission last Monday approved a submission of the application, and we're requesting the council to support that request or the submission of that application as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the application for water treatment plant through PFA. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Next, thank you, Mr. Heron, for your presentation earlier and for your diligence in the work you do. Thank you. Next, we have Caris Health Amendment to the Lease and Affiliation Agreement. Mr. Bill Fenske.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. We are here to present amendments to the affiliation agreement and to the operating lease. The amendments would remove the requirement for a standalone audit of Caris Health and would replace that, that the central care audit would be acceptable, and that any information related to Caris, as would customarily be included in an audit, would be provided by, prepared by the central care auditors. And so we are requesting amendments to both the affiliation agreement and the operating lease agreement, as that language is in both of those documents.
Motion to accept the resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement amendments.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Could you let us know what Rice Hospital Board chose to do on this action, and if they took action on this?
Yes, the, the hospital board did take action previously at its main meeting with a resolution. We have since amended that resolution with the council of Mr. Holland and Mr. Scott, and the document is in front of you. That was approved by the Rice Board at this morning's special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Council questions. Seen in hearing, and roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And keep updating us, we want to know what's going on over at Rice, so thank you so much. Next, we have a formation of the Park and Leisure Services Board. Our HR Director, Ms. Beckman.
Good evening. As discussed at our work session, our city charter does state we need to form a Park and Leisure Services Board, so we would recommend that we begin accepting applications and start that process to form that board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the formation of a Park and Leisure Services Board as reflected in the charter. Discussion. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is Recreation Department Ordinance. Ms. Beckman.
Again, as we discussed at the work session, does, the city charter does require that we have an ordinance whenever we create a new city department, so if we can approve that tonight, it will be in effect essentially by September 1st, which is the tentative date for the WCPR breakup.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the creation of Recreation Department by ordinance.
To do a public hearing?
Just for clarification purposes, I think this would be a motion or introduction of the ordinance to create the department, and then I think you would set it for a public hearing, I would assume now, on August 6th.
Okay, so it'd be creation of Recreation Department by ordinance and have a public hearing on August 6th to hear the matter.
Motion to approve.
That was my motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes as well. Thank you, Sam, for your good work. I know your committee has been working very diligently, and thank you for your leadership you're providing to them. I'm hearing very good reports. Of course, I expected nothing less. Next, we have sale of city property. Mr. Bruce Peterson, our city public works, our city planning development director.
This closed?
Here in council.
Uh, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, Bruce, I was just gonna ask if maybe, would this be more advisable to be at the end of the agenda if we were going to be having the option of going in closed
I had placed it here simply because that was in the list of what was presented in front of me. I certainly would have no opposition to moving it to the end of the meeting. I did not present that on the amended items.
I'm just saying, because it would seem more appropriate to have the break at the, towards the end if we're gonna go in closed session. I'm assuming that we were gonna talk about price of it, and that's an appropriate time to go into closed session?
Is it not? I believe that Mr. Peterson was going to just present the finding of fact, and then if we were to go into closed session, that was the direction that the council were to give, at that point, those parcel numbers would be listed for that.
Okay.
But I mean, I'll yield to the council, the council wishes to move it.
Just do it.
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor and council, to continue our discussion from the work session, staff is proposing that the city entertain the idea of selling a 60-acre tract and an 80-acre tract as part of the Y project, making the property available to the lowest responsible bidder from the shortlist of contractors, and that we would participate with MINDOT, work it into their specs process, so that there would be a dollar figure for the contractors to work off of, and initially just looking for the council's direction to sell the property, and then ultimately we would have to, at some point in the process, prepare an ordinance for the sale of the property, but this would give staff the direction to proceed with it, and then, as we discussed before, to set a sales price in closed session.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
There is no motion.
I'm sorry, if someone like to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the continuation of the annual stormwater meeting. Mr. Sean Christensen, our Public Works Director. At right this time, I was looking over at you when I said it last time, so.
Mayor, members of the council, as you recall from two weeks ago, we opened a stormwater meeting and opened it up for public comment.
I'm sorry, I do need to open the public, no, it's still open, it's continuation, I'm sorry.
Correct. So, I suppose if you, if there are people in the audience that would like to speak, I think we can allow that to happen, and then either before or after I give the...
That's the conclusion of your report.
Okay. As mentioned before, Mayor, members of the council, once a year, you receive, or ask for and receive a stormwater report at an annually scheduled stormwater meeting that's required by the MS4 permit that we currently are under, which is part of the, part of the beginning of the meeting is a definitions, of course, MS4 is municipal separate storm sewer system, that's where the four S's come from, if anybody was, was curious. Purpose of the meeting, of course, is to continue to raise awareness and the importance of stormwater management, and update the status of the MS4 permit conditions. What has the city done in 2017? What are we currently doing in 18? What do we plan to do through the rest of 18 and into the future? And we also allow the public to comment on the implementation procedures. So what is MS4? I'll just read this, because it's per state statute, and so it's directly out of the, out of the research that, if you search for MS4, this is exactly what you'll find. It's conveyance of system or conveyances designed and used for collecting stormwater, which includes roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, madmade channels, storm drains that is owned or operated by a governmental unit having jurisdiction under section 208 of the Clean Water Act, and it discharges into the waters of the United States. So it means a lot of, that's a lot of words, that basically means any town greater than 10,000 people under this NPDES permit, stormwater permit, is required to follow these, these, this system and through this NPCA rules and regulations. Willmar meets, obviously, this requirement designated MS4. As of 2010 census, we're just under 20,000. My understanding in the next sign will read just over 20,000, but obviously, that's not official yet. City originally received approvals for the SWIP, which is Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, in the MS4 in 2008. Current general permit coverage carries us through the end of this month, 2018. We're in the process of getting that renewed. So what is a SWIP? As I mentioned, it's a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Program. City developed a SWIP to address six minimum control measures, and as some of this is very familiar to some of you, when NPCA did their audit and cited issues with the, some of these six issue, or six items, these minimum control measures, and fined us accordingly to what they decided, what they determined to be the damages. The goal of SWIP is to create best management practices, which will reduce or eliminate sediment and other pollutants from our lakes, rivers, and wetlands. That is, I'm soon to get to the area where this meeting will venture or veer from past years. So in the past years, I've gone through this, you know, boring ritual, and give you the same thing what I've done this year, is I've selected, and you'll see these in a couple slides here, a couple items of note, of particular importance, and try to capitalize or emphasize those particular items this year. So, we've updated, what have we done in 2017? We've updated our stormwater ordinances per the, per some of the audit findings. We've conducted illicit discharge detection and elimination training for staff. You can see why there's a lot of initials here, because some of these terms are quite cumbersome. We've increased construction site stormwater inspections. We've inspected 38 outfalls and six ponds this year, or, I'm sorry, I keep saying this year, in 2017. We've got, we've collected over 4,000 cubic yards of material from street sweepings, and we've had, we've had multiple handouts for grasses and leaves in gutters. There's 11 construction sites we inspected on, we inspect on a regular basis. The most common issues were inlet protection and vehicle tracking. We've handed out, and I think this, we ventured into this year, currently handed out 73 grass and leaves in the gutter flyers to individuals, specifically where we found some of the grasses and leaves in the gutters. And we've had 15 verbal reminders to keep those grasses and leaves out of the gutters, and that was all in 2017. We've already done 57 so far in 2018, and the note there that we can do better, and I think that is a couple, twofold, we can do better at reminding the individuals, and as residents, we can do better at keeping that out of the gutters. So why do we create these handouts for grasses and leaves? Leaves and grass clippings are significant amount of pollution for our, for our rivers and lakes. When you blow your lawn waste into the street, it can clog storm drains, cause flooding issues. Storm drains are not collect, connected to the wastewater treatment based on the MS4, the definition of separate storm sewer systems, and so there's no treatment to remove the debris and chemicals from this water before it reaches our lakes and streams. Grass clippings and leaf litter, the waste doesn't break down the same. It has excess nutrients to our, to our water, nitrogen, phosphorus specifically, and those are two items that are very detrimental to our water system, and, and part of our permit that wastewater is required to, to maintain, leads to unwanted and uncontrolled growth of algae and native and non-native aquatic weeds. Algae will naturally occur, but excess nutrients, as it says here, can lead to high levels of algae growth. Apart from looking unsightly, the excessive algae blooms can block sunlight, deplete the oxygen level in the water for our other plants and fish. And again, as a note of importance, we handed out 73 of these notices in 17, we've already handed out 57 this year. More accomplishments, accomplishments for 2017, we created, you know, why, and why we created these, we have, we have an ordinance in place, ordinance 1227. I won't read it, it's there, it's searchable on the, on the website, and there's two different paragraphs there on stormwater management. I will bring your attention to item number 10 there, violations and penalties. We can, if the city so chooses, upon provisions of the ordinance, we can, people can be guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon repeat offenses or existing, every additional day beyond the initial one is an existing, or I'm sorry, is an additional separate offense. So, we haven't done that, we'd rather not do that, but the options are already written in the ordinances that we can do that. So a little phrase that our guys are like, like to say to some of these people, when you're mowing, mow in. Okay, so what that means is, when you're driving along the curb and gutter, if you're, the chute on your lawnmower is pointed out to the street, drive the other direction, so it blows into the lawn, so you don't have to blow or pick up, otherwise pick up or sweep up the grass clippings that are out into the street. And that's basically what this slide says. There are five thoughts that come to mind as we put this into, into, you know, plain English, as we discuss this with, with residents, and we try to do our education process, you know, direct, a person should, you know, based on knowing this and what it's doing to our, can do to our lakes and rivers and storm drain system, it would make sense to blow the grass clippings into the lawn instead of out. So that's item number one. Number two, there are laws against blowing the grass out, we've already discussed that, and people still do it, maybe because we don't enforce, again, I think that's additional time and effort spent on something that people should want to help maintain their, their, in front of their lots. Leaves and grass accumulate in the streets and can create water drainage problems, and combined with other objects to block the storm sewers. As you know, as we all know, that occasional flash flooding occurs, and if these are blocked, that obviously will not help the situation. So it begs the question of number four, is the person who has blown their grass and leaves into the storm sewer, or into the gutter, and blocked the storm sewer, is that the same person that is, got their, got water in their basement or in their front yard instead of in the, in the system itself? And number five, the nitrogen-laden grass also pollutes water in the streams, rivers and lakes, as it flows from the storm sewers, again, directly into the waterways. So the other specific item we, we've dealt with here recently is construction stormwater. Okay, it's all part of the permit, and so these, these pictures kinda give a different, tell a little bit different story. The top left picture is, shows missing or inadequate inlet protection, which allows sediment into the storm sewers directly, and again, back to the previous slides, contaminate that, the stormwater that flows directly into the ponds and the streams. Bottom left, you know, without tracking, BMP is the best management practices that I've, that I mentioned earlier. This sediment is tracked on the paved surfaces, and then after a rainfall, goes into the gutters, into the storms, and directly into the, the lake, which is consequently, effectively what happened when we got, when the first call went to NPCA of the, what they called, what people called dirty water, turbid water by NPCA standards, that's muddy water that's flowing directly into their lakes and the streams. The picture on the right there is actually a, on a construction site that shows debris and discarded concrete truck washout, which is not allowed to be that way because of the chemicals directly out of the, out of the concrete truck, and so their contractors are responsible to take care of that, other than just dumping it on site. On some of these pages, you'll notice I've got a checklist here that, that is carried out to the field and marked and discussed with the contractors upon site inspections. These, the accomplishments that we are planning on for 2018 is to continue to, and again, update stormwater ordinances to keep them up to date, and update this checklist that you see here on the right to current standards. Schedule more of that, I mentioned earlier, the IDDE training for staff, and keep them up to date, and increase, obviously, public participation and awareness. We've been in a couple different public open houses and had some, 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 not, I don't know if we've had videos, but I know we've had some poster boards and things of that nature describing some of these items that I've, that I've mentioned tonight. Part of the annual report is to submit by June 30, and we did that, we got that accomplished, and so what'll happen is, next year, June 30th will be everything we did in 2018, including the attendance at, at this meeting, and any comments that I receive either via email or phone, or at the meeting itself, are included in that report each year. We have to notify NPC if any changes to our SWIP, and we, we do that on a regular basis, and then we also have to, like I mentioned, document the number of people present at the annual meeting. I guess one advantage to extending it to two meetings is I can count the population or the attendance at both meetings and increase our numbers. With that, Mayor and council, I would open questions or comments.
Anybody from the public wishes to make a comment during this public hearing? Seen in hearing, then I'll close it and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes? And our action would be to accept the MS4 report.
Motion to receive the annual stormwater report for MS4 permitting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Member Meskey.
Where are we in the reapplication process? And is it a five-year process, a five-year permit every time you do it?
Councilmember Meskey, I believe it is continual five years, I don't think it's three, I think it's a five-year process again, and we've got all that paperwork filled out, we're, we, I believe we've submitted already, and I think it's renewed, I don't, I can verify the status of that, but the fact that it's, you know, expires in two weeks, we've, we've been on top of that, so.
Councilmember Alvarado.
You indicated that you've passed out 57 warning-type things.
Correct.
Are they in a certain area, town, is it, is it, certain neighborhoods? What are you finding?
Sure. I don't think it'd be certain neighborhoods, they are, you know, as you know, you can drive around, the other, this weekend I drove up, I drove up Seventh Street and saw three different, three different properties that had grass out in the curb. So, I, I don't think it's specific neighborhoods, that was the one I happened to drive up, but you can see these scattered around, around town, and so the stormwater compliance officer that we've got on staff is, you know, when he's out doing other things, he, he looks for that and, and then sees if there's anybody available to, to discuss it with. He doesn't just leave it in the door, because that doesn't seem to do any good, but he tries to, you know, if they're mowing, he stops and talks to them. If they got a blower out, he stops and talks to them. The one that is a little bit disturbing, not so much of concentrated areas, because we haven't found that, is the repeat offenders. And so he's got a couple people that he's talked to multiple times, and given the same flyer to multiple times, and so that's, that's the frustrating part.
Yeah. Would it be, would it be possible, like, in the spring of the year, to send out reminders or, you know, like Ron said, use the utilities to send out reminders of how to mow?
Sure. You know, I think what we did this year, if I remember right, we actually notified the, I want to say it was a middle school, might have been grade school, we notified one of the schools at the end of the year, and said, here, take this flyer to your parents, and, and, and so we, we're trying different avenues for, for some of the education purposes.
Okay, that's a great idea, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you do see someone blowing leaves or grass, who do we call, your office, then?
Yes.
And you get there in a day or two, or a week?
If the guys are, if the, if the compliance officer's available, he'll, he'd drive out right away.
Okay.
Obviously, if it's a, you know, a weekend, that makes it a little more difficult, then we can check on the property, you know, at the beginning of the week, but we'd get to it as soon as we can, we try not to let it go, because, as you know, we've had very few days of no rain, and so we like to get that out of the street as soon as possible.
I know, I've stopped a few times when I've seen it, and I did one last year on First Street Commercial Property, it was a commercial mower.
Yep.
It was a new guy, he didn't know it.
Well, they know, they know.
Oh, he said he didn't.
Well, the new guys may not, but they should know.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Meskey.
Thank you. I think we had this conversation before, though, that some of the, I mean, that there are a lot of commercial offenders with this. Is that something that we could do a mailing to the business? Because most of those businesses contract with someone to do that.
Sure.
So, is that something that we could consider somehow getting the information to the business to say that the person they're working with is violating it, or?
You know, we can. In, in some of the conversation that, that the compliance officers had, I assume is with, directly with the mower, but yeah, we can send out mailings to the businesses. You know, it was, it's a smaller list, if you will, to send it out to the people that actually do the mowing, and so we've, we've done that, we've tried to contact them directly and say, look, this is something that you guys can help us control in a big way by, you know, the multiple places that you do. So, I suppose if we had a, if we had a business that, that continued to do that, and we weren't getting anywhere with the, with the mowing company itself, we could absolutely contact the business.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
My question was kind of going with the compliance officers. It sounds like things work well normally, if you find somebody, they may change it. If you talk to my, my concern is the same one that you were talking about of the repeat offenders. You, we haven't pursued a misdemeanor thing, but has the compliance officers talked about wanting to move into that direction?
They, uh.
For, I mean, in particular for those that are?
Sure.
Major offenders?
You know, not to that level yet. They've, they've told, talked to me about, or he, we only have the one, he's talked to me about, at what point do we consider that? Obviously, at that point, I would probably bring it back to you all and say, is this something that we want to, that you will absolutely hear about if we start doing this? I don't think it would take long for the word to get out, if we start writing some tickets, we just haven't. I know there are neighboring towns that do.
Okay.
And I think, I'd heard rumors that one of the neighboring towns is up to words of $100 per fence, per day, so.
Okay.
That would get the attention, I would assume, pretty quickly.
Sean, I just want to commend you and your staff. I know that you were at the lakes meetings, I know that you have two of your staff members attending those meetings, and I know that that was very well attended, and I know that our compliance officer was there, gave a very nice formal presentation, Councilmember Nelson was there as well as myself. And so, thank you for allowing them to do that outreach. I know that was after hours and put a strain on, not only what you had to do for that day, but also what they had to do.
Sure.
So, thank you. So, thank you for your report, and so with that, we will take a motion to approve the annual stormwater meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Wasn't made in seconded, I guess I already went through that part, we had a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those are all same sign, that motion does carry. Next, we have a consideration of local option sales tax ballot question. We'll start with Mr. Scott, our city attorney, and then Mr. Dawson, if you'd stand ready in case there's any questions the council has. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. In previous work sessions, the council has received information from the Invest in Wilmer Committee, who has been working in conjunction with the Civic Center Study Group and the consultant preparing the Civic Center Master Plan to identify needed improvements throughout the city for recreational opportunities and improvements to new facilities. In order for a local option sales tax, which has been the identified potential source for these improvements to be enacted, there's three steps. The first step is for the city council to pass a resolution approving the tax and directing staff to contact the county and get the ballot question put on the ballot. The second step is for voters to approve the local option sales tax in a referendum held in conjunction with the general election in November. The third step would be for special legislation to be passed authorizing the city to adopt the local option sales tax. That would only occur if the special, if the election held and the general election were successful. Before you and your packet today is a draft ballot question, as well as a resolution that would approve the local option sales tax. The resolution states, in attempts to summarize the extensive efforts Invest in Wilmer has engaged in to engage community stakeholders and identify important projects to be funded through this tax. The six projects identified are as follows. For a new recreation center, new recreation center and auditorium, $10 million. For new softball and baseball and multipurpose athletic fields, $6 million. For infrastructure improvements at Robins Island Regional Park, $3 million. For spectator amenities and new playground area at Swanson Field, $2 million. For stormwater management infrastructure improvements, $7 million. And for a replacement community center, $2 million. The total projects to be funded through the tax amount to $30 million in new improvements. The tax is anticipated to be in effect for a period of 13 years and would cover the $30 million in capital expenses plus related debt service. You also have before you as part of the resolution, and as it would look on the ballot, a sample ballot question, and maybe it would be best to just read the ballot question as I think the city staff, myself, and the Invest in Wilmer community have envisioned it. The local option sales tax ballot question is proposed to read, should the city of Wilmer impose a 1/2% local sales and use tax and a $20 excise tax on retail sales of motor vehicles for the purposes of funding a community center, recreation and athletic fields, Robins Island Regional Park amenities, Swanson Field Regional Park improvements, a recreation and events center, and stormwater improvements? The estimated amount of sales, use, and excise taxes projected to be collected over a 13-year period would fund $30 million in improvements plus associated costs for debt service. Given the extensive discussion of this matter that's taken place, the recommendation at this point is for the council to adopt the resolution approving the proposed local option sales tax and directing the city clerk to make the arrangements to make sure that a ballot question substantially in the form as I read is placed on the ballot for the voters to vote on in November. And with that, I'd certainly welcome any additional comments Mr. Dawson would like to make on behalf of Invest in Wilmer.
Certainly. Mr. Scott, one of the things that we worked hard on was removing the word auditorium, and I see that I had recommended that to be removed when I went over the agenda with Mr. Holland, I see it was still missed. So, it should say event center rather than auditorium. There's been extensive confusion within the community in that the community feels that we're talking about the auditorium downtown and not talking about the, a new event center out at the Civic Center complex. So, it's in the car report, and I would like that to accurately reflect event center instead of new recreation, so new recreation center slash event center.
It is corrected on the actual question.
The question, it's corrected on the question.
Yep.
That's right, yes.
So, we need to make that correction on the resolution?
Correct.
We'll do that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Right.
I have a question of Robert's.
Councilmember Nelson.
Okay.
What we're going to do here is, rather than accept the motion to approve it as submitted, we'll take comments first, and then we'll go to, if the council is in a position to make a recommendation for it. So, Councilmember Nelson.
I received a couple of questions, but one of the questions that I had, from a legal standpoint, there is much more detail in the resolution than there is on the ballot question. So, what does it obligate the city to do if this, if, if the ballot passes, are we obligated to do what we said in the resolution? Because the figures and some of the things are different in the ballot question than the resolution. So, I'm curious which, from a legal standpoint, applies.
Councilmember Nelson, the resolution controls how the proceeds of the local option sales tax, should it be enacted, can be spent. The ballot question is, I think, typically somewhat less detailed. You're really trying to, in a concise manner, seek input from the voters on whether the proposed tax should pass or not. I hope we do not have any discrepancies as far as information that's different between the ballot question and the resolution. If we do, and I missed it, we'll need to fix it.
And from the state standpoint, it doesn't require, this doesn't really state when it ends. It, it talks about an amount, but it also talks about a period of time with that. So, just clarification on, on that, with how long can we collect it?
I believe the resolution is clear that this would be in effect for a period of 13 years. The, and the, the proposed ballot question is certainly consistent with that. It states the projected revenue to be generated by the tax over a 13-year period, but obviously, if the council has any suggested revisions to the ballot question, we'd be happy to entertain those.
I think for, mostly for me, it was more, I was, wanted to clarify the difference between the resolution and the ballot, because it, it felt a little different to me. I'm supportive of it, I just want to make sure that it's clear for people to understand what, what we're trying to do, so.
So, the, the short answer is, the resolution will control how the revenues generated from the tax in the event is, it is enacted, would be spent, or could be spent.
Kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Nelson's, so would, after the election and we're successful, would that start on January 1 and go for 13 years to January 1, 13 years from now? Is that what I'm understanding?
Councilmember Alvarado, I highly doubt this could start on January 1st, 2019, because the next step would be to secure the special legislation. So, we'd be doing that in the 2019 session, so it would likely be enacted, I don't know, but I might expect January 1st, 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no additional comments? Is there anybody on the council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson?
Just one more clarification. The ballot says stormwater improvements, the resolution says stormwater management infrastructure improvements. So, is infrastructure below the street, not the street, or what does, what does that, those words mean?
I believe what the, what they mean is what was covered in, in the stormwater report that we just had. And Mr. Christensen, if you could go back to the screen and pull up the definition of what the stormwater conveyance is, I think it's encompassing of all of that, it's what it is.
Our mayor, members of the council, should have left this up here.
I was going to tell you it might come up later, and I didn't, I should have. That's the biggest piece that we have, that it contains where the water goes, it directs what happens with the water, it holds the water, and I think that there's, sometimes there's confusion into, are streets actually supposed to flood? And by design, they are. That's our first level of collecting water.
Correct.
From what I've been told by multiple engineers.
Right. And I hope to continue some of that conversation, but that, that's exactly right. So, that keeps it out of the yards, keeps it in the streets, keeps it in the system, albeit in intersections temporarily, and we're hoping temporarily. That's the plan, is to, to keep it in there a short amount of time before it is able to leave the system, but, so you're exactly right, Mayor, members of the council, the conveyance, or system of conveyances, a couple more lines down, which includes roads with drainage systems, streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, channels, and storm drains.
So, I think that's the intent. And I don't know if we have to be more inclusive, I just kind of thought that when Mr. Dawson had asked me that question, I said, and this is what I kind of shared with him, this example. But, so, I don't know, do you think it needs to be more definitive?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I don't view the language in the resolution as any more or less limiting than what's in the ballot question. I think the ballot question was just an attempt to be a little more concise.
I'm simply hoping for clarification for, for people to understand, so.
Is there a way that we could word that better, do you think?
I don't, I don't know, and I think the resolution, if the resolution is our guiding document, it says stormwater management infrastructure improvements, so.
Right. I'm just wondering if we need to, if, I mean, we certainly could, could reference the document that Mr. Christensen just shared with us as a principle, or would that be helpful, do you think? I mean, Mr. Dawson, what do you think on that? I mean, if you get questions on that, I mean, will you know how we're going to answer that question? I mean?
Mr. Mayor, the members of the council, I guess my opinion would be that when the people go to the polls, they're going to click yes or no, and none of them are going to read the question, because they're going to see all this marketing out there with hopefully some of the specifics that you have. Now, there's probably a percentage that are going to read it line by line, but I would certainly want to trust our attorney to make the recommendation on what we need. So, I, we're comfortable with it, but we don't do this every day, and I know none of you guys do as well, so I certainly, certainly think that maybe it would be fine, but like I said, I think a lot of people's decision's going to be made once they go to the, to vote. That would be my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think you have clarified that, with that, but.
Additional discussion? Is there anybody wishing to make a motion?
What are we making a motion for?
Making a motion to accept the local option sales tax ballot question, the resolution supporting that.
So moved.
Approving a resolution to approve, that the resolution approving the proposal of local sales, local sales tax, local sales use and excise tax, and authorize that the ballot question be approved and placed on the general election ballot of November, in November of 2018 in Canway County.
Still moved.
Second.
What's my maiden seconded? Additional discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my 20-plus years on this council, first thing that comes to my mind when we discuss something like this is the taxpayer. And just a couple of comments. One is, we and they never know the true cost to government because taxes, fees, services, and then sales taxes that provide facilities like this. Second one is, in, in all the years I've been on the council, whenever we've built something or done a sales tax, we have never, ever explained to the public what's going to cost down the road. I mean, it's nice to have a, a multipurpose athletic fields and this, this recreation center we're talking about for $10 million, but what's it going to cost us in five years? Maintenance, how many more employees is it going to be? And, you know, we only have three places to get taxes from in this city to pay for these things. Property tax, LGA, and payment in lieu of taxes from the hospital and the MUC. That's still our money, they're all taxes, still our money that comes to pay for this. A sales tax is an easy way to do this, I, I agree with that, it's an easy way to pay for something, but down the road, we never, we never have a plan on how we're going to maintain it. I mean, we're, we're trying to maintain facilities right now, and it's costing us some money. And from what I see in our tax basin, Wilmer, the taxes that we're collecting in addition every year, is not keeping up with the cost of the services we're providing. Police, fire, clean streets, public works, clean water, sewer. So, I, I have a hard time voting for something like this. Again, it's an easier way to pay for something, but we never, ever tell the taxpayer, what's it going to cost in five years? Because we know it's going to cost more money. And I, I think we need to spend our money maintaining what we have, whether it's a civic center, the community center, and I know that's involved in here. But this new $10 million recreation facility, somebody's got to be there. Somebody's got to clean the floor, stack the chairs, pay for the utilities, sewer water. pay for the utilities, sewer water. I, speaking for the taxpayer, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question will be directed for Mr. Scott. With regards to local option sales taxes and related projects, are there stipulations that bind us? In other words, if we are, if we put something like this on the ballot, are we then bound to spend the amounts, or up to the amounts on the actual facility and nothing else facility-related? An example would be like a deferred maintenance fund. Can local option sales tax dollars say the facility comes in 5%, 10% under cost? Can a deferred maintenance fund be established? And can those local option sales tax dollars be used to fund deferred maintenance funds?
Counselmember Plowman, I believe there is a limitation in the statute that the sales tax proceeds can only fund capital improvements. I don't think it can go to maintenance.
Okay. That answers my question. Thanks.
Counselmember Meskey?
I think both the comments about deferred maintenance are very valid, and there's something that is the responsibility of the city to know what those costs are going to be ongoing. I don't know if it fits on a ballot question, because I mean, for instance, a community center, I mean, we put that out there, and we built that, and it's the lack of maintenance that has put it onto a local option sales tax piece again. And maybe it's because we didn't plan well for maintaining that facility, but I mean, that's why some of these projects are going to have to happen, because that didn't happen. And so, I think those are very good words of wisdom, that we really need to know what the costs are going to be long-term. So, if we do these wonderful facilities, we're not redoing these wonderful facilities in 40 or 50 years because we didn't maintain them. So, I think those are wonderful words of wisdom that we need to be looking at. I don't know if it necessarily fits on a local option sales tax question, what the cost of those maintenance things are, but if we don't address them, they'll be on a future local option sales tax question later.
Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, earlier this evening, we passed a request for a grant for the MUC for $8.5 million. The grant would go up to possibly $7 million, from zero to $7 million. That's just the beginning of what we have to pay for in the future for water quality in Wilmer. It's going to be in excess of $22 million by the time we're done. We're also going to consider tonight an 8.5-plus million-dollar project called the New City Hall. These all got to be paid for with tax dollars, plus the maintenance on the facilities we're trying to fix now, and a new facility if it goes on the ballot. Just a reminder, there's more spending coming, folks, and it's our tax dollars. Got to pay for it.
Mr. Mayor, Wilmer, Wilmer is growing. We're bringing in, I think about the tech campus and the fact that Epitopics, I believe, was purchased by a Danish company, and they're going to be bringing in a number of engineers. Wilmer is not going to stay Wilmer of 2018. Wilmer is growing. We have to look beyond today and look towards the future, and look at that we're going to have a larger tax base. Yes, I know there's maintenance, and I'm not crazy about it, but we have to bring in those amenities that allow us to grow and be the city that people want to come to. People want to live here, be proud of. I think we, I think we got to realize that 2018, this is, this is just a passing moment. Wilmer is, I think, on the verge to grow with the Highway 23 project, and that's not done. They want to run that from Pipestone all the way up to Duluth. So, people are going to see our, our community. They're going to want to live in our community. They will contribute to that tax base. And I think we have to be forward-thinking and believe that we're going to be able to maintain it, maintain our projects, because we're going to have the population growth that we need to maintain those projects. Wilmer's not a static town. We're not going to stay 20,000 people. We're not, we're going to be growing. And we've got to have the amenities to reflect that. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I'll just make a couple of comments. I think that, first off, I'd like to thank the committee that brought this to us, the work that you did. It was a grassroots effort. You guys vetted the issues. You listened to the council. When the council said, we want you to go this way or that way, we did that. And I'll agree with what Councilmember Alvarado just said. Wilmer's not stagnant. I mean, if any of you want to follow me around for a week, and the people I meet with that talk about all the exciting things they want to have happen here in Wilmer, and one of the things I'm starting to hear on a regular basis is that you're going to be doing stuff with this local option sales tax to make Wilmer a better community. And we are excited about it. We want to be a part of it. And if you're not hearing it, I'm sorry you're not hearing it, but maybe you're talking to the wrong people. We have people in this community that are gloom and doom about everything. The reason we're in this situation, where we're $100 million behind on maintenance, is the fact that it wasn't done by previous councils. Now, we, as this council, have to address these issues. And this is moving forward. This is a positive direction. This is good things happening. You know, $105 million for improvements for Highway 23 that was passed due to a group of concerned local community members that came along and said, you know, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to settle with, well, we tried that once before, so we're not going to try again. And so, I applaud the council for having the consideration. Do we have to look at the maintenance cost? Absolutely. But I know that, I drove around through the Oslo Meadows property yesterday, and looked at all of the new housing starts up there. Okay? Those properties last year were on tax forfeiture. They were, they were, taxes were not being paid on them. And we have houses going up there. We on the, on the east side of town, I drove through there as well. There's a number of new housing starts out there as well, in that development. And so, we have people investing in our town. How many of you seen the notice from DED that we got the $1.2 million grant this week? $1.2 million is going to be invested in our community of outside dollars. Now, where did those dollars come from? The taxpayers. But not all that $1.2 million came from Wilmer taxpayers. It came from across the entire state. And those returns on investments are what we are looking for. This will give us a good return on investment as well. And, you know, I would urge the council to seriously consider the direction or the message that you send on your vote. Are we going to have to maintain it? Yes, we are. The Englands were involved in the project out at the Civic Center when we did that last project. And did we have to hire one additional staff member? Yes, we did. But if you take a look at what that's brought into our community for additional revenues out at that facility, heads-on beds, people eating meals in our restaurants, people buying locally, positive things happening, I think those positives far outweigh the negatives. And, you know, Mr. Okens and I sat down and did some budget numbers about a month ago. And, you know, we know about what our, what our increase is. So, thanks to our developers that are doing work in town. You know, Counselmember Alvarado, as you were stating, I mean, we have businesses coming from outside, wanting to make investments within our community. And we have a lot of positive things happening. When I was down and talked to the McKnight Foundation, they were talking about all the positive things happening in Wilmer. I said, man, I wish you guys, I wish you 50 people could come back to Wilmer and sit in a council meeting and just listen to some of the gloom and doom we hear. Because that's not what people outside of Wilmer are hearing. They're hearing great things are happening in Wilmer. So, I'm excited about it. I think we have a new vision. I think we're heading in the right direction, and great things are happening here, and I'm excited to be a part of it. And I think we all are. All of us are. Additional comments before we vote? Councilmember Nelson?
I just wanted to say I agree with both Mayor and Councilmember Alvarado. And I too would like to thank the community, the committee. We are a regional center, and I think this really speaks to what we want for our future. Local option sales tax can be only used for regional projects, and I think we've done a good job putting some together that other communities are looking for us to lead. And I think this is a step forward to do that, to make our community better, and to function like a true regional center. And so, I do support this, and I hope that the council supports it also.
Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm not preaching gloom and doom. Everything I stated is a fact, is a fact. So, don't put the gloom and doom on Ron Christensen. And it's the taxpayers that are going to make the ultimate decision. So, I'm glad it's going to the, to a vote. I'm glad it's going to a vote. It's, I think we should do the same thing for City Hall when it comes up later this meeting. Let the taxpayers make, make the decision. But they ultimately will, and I'm just spouting facts. Thank you.
Additional discussions? Anybody from the committee that wishes to say anything else?
Just a couple of thoughts. Thanks for the comments. They're all taken very, very seriously. And I think that, like I said, we're looking at this as an investment, just like a business. You got to update your equipment. You got to invest in your people. We have to grow, and the community has to grow, just like a business. You're either growing or you're dying. And my fear is that if we don't start making some investments here, it's going to be very difficult to bring more people into our community that want to live and raise their family and stay when they're in their senior years. So, certainly all of the numbers are important. We have all kinds of ideas. Once you guys hire the recreational director, we're ready to meet with them, talk about things like naming rights and rental fees and promotional things, and how we can work together, bringing in other towns and communities, coming into our community and be involved. Also, I just wanted to mention that the school board supported and made an endorsement tonight to recommend a help and work with us and work with Mr. Holland on the details. And then, also, what we're really asking for, and I appreciate, and I think Councilman Christensen mentioned this, was that all we're asking for is that the eight council members give the public an opportunity to vote yes or no. So, that's what we're hoping for tonight, and appreciate all your time and your service.
Thank you. So, in front of us is a resolution approving the proposed local sales use and excise tax, and authorizing that the ballot question be approved and placed in the general election ballot in November of 2018 in Canway County. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
I'm going to abstain.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate that. And again, this is the first step in a three-step process. Next, it will take you guys educating the public, voter approval, and then, once that's done, then it'll be a team to go down and meet with our legislators and to get them to support that and get that passed, and then get back and get the project started. So, thank you guys for your work. Really appreciate it. So, best. Next, we have consideration of Civic Center Ice Replacement Award contract in the amount of $1,999,560. Mr. Christensen?
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, I won't go through the history any further on this, this project, except for a couple items of note. Stevens Engineering was contracted to design this project in October of 2017, and they have put those documents together, created the design, the specs, bid the project out, and we received those bids on July 3 of this year. The last line of that history comment on your, on your form in front of you, option B, a two-sheet system with an expanded resurfacer room at the Blue Line Arena was the chosen project that we bid on July 3. We received 11 bids for this project. Very, very good turnout.
Wow.
I'm sorry. Item 12 is 11 bids. This one, we received four. So, my apologies. Four, four bids, which is still a great, great turnout. And Cornerstone of Wilmer, believe it or not, was the low bid, the amount of $1,991,560. It includes, that number includes all three alternates, with a new concrete paving area south of the resurfacer addition. And it includes an overhead door in the existing Cardinal Arena, refrigeration room that'll be used for storage. And then, it also includes integrally colored concrete in the precast structural wall in lieu of plain gray concrete color. Recommendation before you is to award the bid for the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Project, Cornerstone of Wilmer, in the amount of $1,991,560, and authorize signatures. So.
Motion made and seconded to approve a bid from Cornerstone Construction of Wilmer for the Civic Center Ice Replacement System. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmiss?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of Western Interceptor Storm Sewer Phase Two Project Award of Contract in the amount of $1,635,631.36. Mr. Christensen?
Mayor, members of the council, again, I will not bore everyone with the gory details of the history paragraph on this, on the form in front of you, except that to say this is a project that runs from Baker Field, south of Baker Field, to the western, I'm sorry, eventually to Hot Creek, with a stubout that was planned for and installed on, in 2004, I believe that happened. The other thing I'll draw your attention to on this, on the form, is that the second paragraph under history should probably be under current circumstance, as this current project includes a 48-inch storm sewer that'll run from Swanson and Ortenblad Ponds. Sorry, it'll begin at Swanson, convey water west through, towards the Magellan Pipeline property, then south towards Ortenblad, then eventually west near 30th Street, which has a stubout already waiting to accept this, this water. Analysis determined the pond should be designed for a 10-year storm. Design will help alleviate these areas prone to flooding during some of the larger storm events. Bids were solicited. This is the one, I apologize, that has 11 bids for this project. So, again, we had a great turnout. And the low bid was received by RL Larson Excavating, in the amount of $1,635,631.36. And so, the recommendation would be to award the bid in that amount and authorize signatures on this project.
I'll move Steph's recommendation, Mr. Mayor. Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the bid for RL Larson Excavating, in the amount of $1,635,631.36. Discussion. Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where's RL out of? I was prepared for that answer. They're out of St. Cloud. And have we dealt with them before? I don't know if they've done anything for the city of Wilmer, but they have done projects for Bolton Mink, who designed the project. Oh, okay. And I believe that is in the Bolton Mink letter in, in the agenda packet, that they had done, they listed a couple of projects there that they've worked on, so. Okay.
Additional discussion? Sean, I want to commend you. You know, one of our goals at the retreat was to try to get more bids on projects. And here's a shining example tonight of you accomplishing that.
I'd take credit for that, but thank you. I'm glad we got to them as well.
It's a team. And it's the administrator, it's you, it's our consultants we've hired, it's everybody. It's everybody working together. And I remember the days when, and the council will remember this as well, of getting one bid, and, you know, hoping, hoping it was a good number, you know? So, kudos to everybody for making this happen. It's a good deal. Roll call.
Councilmember Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, the consideration of an ordinance establishing a process for disposing of surplus equipment. Mr. Scott, our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you is an ordinance that addresses a matter that came before you in a work session earlier this year regarding a process for disposing of surplus city equipment. You'll recall, the city has a longstanding You'll recall, the city has a longstanding practice of annually conducting an auction to dispose of equipment that was surplus to the city's needs. This year, for the first time, I think, in at least a while, the city formally adopted a resolution with a list of the equipment it was declaring surplus and authorizing be sold. This ordinance is the follow-up step I told you would be coming back then. This simply establishes, as the official process of the city, the same procedure for disposing of equipment. That would be that the, annually, before the auction, the city council review and pass a resolution with a list of the equipment declared to be surplus. It authorizes the sale of that equipment at the city auction or through any other legal means. It also includes a provision expressly exempting the police department that follows its own statutory processes for forfeited vehicles and equipment. With that, the recommendation would be that the city council introduce this ordinance tonight and set it for a public hearing on August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on August 6th to talk about getting rid of excess surplus property. Will this mean that I don't have to sign 200 and some pieces of paper for the auction?
It will. It also includes, I should have pointed out, a provision that the city clerk can have that pleasure.
Exactly. Right, 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 right. She gets paid to do it, I don't, so. I had writer's cramp after she got done. She said, "Mr. Mayor, are you sure you want to do this?" And I said, "We might have to do it in two days." But we got it done, didn't we, Judy? Okay. Discussion. Hold in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 There's a poll, same sign. That motion does carry. Mr. Scott, item that we want to make sure, Councilmember Nelson just slid me a note. On the resolution for the local option sales tax, did we get changing that, removing the auditorium and adding in Event Center?
Yes, that direction was clear. We'll make that change before you sign it.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up and making sure that was done, because I did not read that into the record. Next, we have a conversation on dissolving the Community Ed and Rec. Mr. Holland.
Well, Mayor and council, in your packets, we have the draft agreement that Dr. Holm and I have been working on, along with the city attorney, and along with the school attorney. And our desire over the last eight weeks was that we would have both the city council and the school district sign the agreement on the same night, was our, was our desire. So that's why, one reason it's here tonight. After we went through several drafts, we felt like we've covered all the different areas. And I also got a text message from the school superintendent about 30 minutes ago, and the school board has passed this draft agreement that is in your packets. So I'm recommending approval of this agreement tonight. Couple of things I want to point out. This does not talk about the hiring and firing of city employees or school employees. That was intentionally left out. This does not say that the financials of either group are complete as of September 1st. There isn't, in fact, there is no end date. And that's intentional, because I can see something six months coming in down the road. And I've done this before. A year from now, something will come in. And so we, we will still have to pay our bills, and they will still have to pay their bills. So this agreement tonight basically puts in, in place that we both agree that we're separating as of September 1st, and that we both have set a path to hire different employees, which they've done and which we're on the path of doing with our reorganization and the passing of the ordinances tonight. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Your motion?
Is the motion to cancel the agreement?
The mo, the motion, the appropriate action would be to approve the recommendation of the school superintendent, Mr. Holm, and her city administrator to dissolve the agreement between Wilmer Community Ed and Rec, between the school district and the city of Wilmer, effective on September 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm glad we're moving this forward. I like the fact that there's no finality as far as the financials. I know when you deal with money, it can be a little tumultuous. So I'm hoping that by leaving it open and allowing the parties involved, Dr. Holm and Mr. Holland, to work, work together to resolving this, I think that's a good, good step.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will vote in favor of this motion, but only because we really have no choice here. I think it's unfortunate that we are here. I'm disappointed we are here. I don't believe that it's in the best interest of the public, and I, and I wish we had other options.
Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmentz.
Regretful aye.
Mesky.
Same, aye.
We have seven ayes and one nay.
Mr. Scott, that resolution passes, correct?
Correct.
The resolution passes. I didn't know if it had to be unanimous, because it was dissolving an agreement, but, okay. You and I didn't talk about that beforehand. I too wish it wasn't happening, but thank you for the school board. Thank you for our staff, and heading in a new direction. Consideration of site selection for the new city hall. I believe at this time, that would be Mr., what I've got on my notes is that, Mr. Ingin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We have, we have a PowerPoint just summarizing three points. One are the results of the community meeting, which I, I'm sure you, you're all aware of. We have some pros and cons of different sites and some site comparisons. When you look at the community meeting, over two-thirds of the votes did, or the majority of the votes were for the, the current location. But about two-thirds of that amount, just under that, was for the, an East Highway 12 location. Block 50 and Candy Mall were, came very low. What we are showing here is some comparisons of the two higher sites. If we look through, we can look at, we have some pros and some cons. I'm not sure I need to read through every one of these. I think everybody's had it, so you've seen it. And I guess when we look at the conditions and what we're looking for and the characteristics, there can be some different opinions, and they can go different ways. But we're trying to put down some items that are visible. Basically, both sites can work. But the question is, what is the better site, is what, that you have to make a decision on. I won't read through them, and maybe we can just move on slowly to the second one. This is the existing city hall. I think some key issues downtown, everybody talks about parking, but yet the parking lot that is on 7th Street has 20, 25 to 27 places, about the same as a staff, and it's, it's really underutilized. It's, I don't think I've normally seen it full during the day. And so I think there is parking as a, can happen, can work. Cons, you know, if you involve demolishing the city hall, we do have to temporarily relocate it. One option, I think the Civic Center or Community Center was mentioned, but also the city auditorium could possibly work with some temporary politician, politician, and wiring and partitions. The way that we've been talking about it, it could or may not include the Howard Hardaway Hank issue. That would be another thing later on that would be, be looked at. We aren't saying if it's a freestanding building or if it's linked to the auditorium, but it would be in that area, and the, the solution would come later. The East Highway 12 site, there's a, a large piece of property. You know, you could do a lot of things. If indeed, the one big advantage of that site, you could integrate Public Works and MUC, if that was appropriate to do. It often, there are very few cities of this size that has Public Works with all the backyard functions on the same off, same site as an office. That isn't very common, because a, a large amount of Public Works is moving trucks in and out. You need a backyard where you store manholes and gravel and sand and salt and a lot of things. But, you know, if you wanted to do that, and I don't think there's any, nobody's telling us that that's what you want to do, but that could open a door here. You know, it is, it would be a stimulus to development, and both projects would be a stimulus to the neighborhood development where it would be located. And, you know, I think you've got all kinds of land. You don't need that much land for a city. I think the best use of that land, you know, if indeed a business came to town and they needed 13 some acres and they would like to be in the heart of the city in a visible location, it's an ideal location. I don't know that there's a site, somebody's looking for that, but I think it's always good to have that open. It's a wonderful site for, for something. It hasn't had a very glorious past. It wasn't a decade ago or so, it wasn't a high priority, but the location is, it could be good. We can probably move on. We had some, just site comparisons. You know, the existing site is, is an urban site. You've got every, all the sites, both sites have all the utilities in the street. But the East site is more of a suburban site, so you're back farther, you need approaches off the street, you've got more parking to be developed. Downtown, it's really in the middle, surrounded by parking right now. There, there could be less costs involved with that. The stormwater retention, the existing site, we would not be affecting stormwater, because it's all hard surfaces currently. The other site is all soft, so according to the ordinance, we would have retention and filtration needed. In talking with your Public Works Director, he mentions that maybe just in principle, the city would want to have some retention on the downtown site. And that's appropriate voluntarily to set a good example for the community, and emphasize what the pro, concerns are. Soil correction, it's really hard to, this could be a big item, but it's hard, hard to know. We don't have any detailed information on the East site, the existing site. I have not noticed a large amount of failing of the concrete and such in that, that building, so I don't sense that there's a major problem. Probably isn't a major problem on the East side either. We've done projects near there, and they've worked fine. One advantage of the downtown site is you could use the auditorium more easily. Be very easy to integrate the two upper floors of the city auditorium, where the city hall used to be before the current building was built. As one level could be the rack eight, one level could be the IT center for the city server, where there's minimal public access needed. If we have an elevator and a two-story, to, to our city hall, that could provide access to those levels to, to make that work. I think in the long term, the auditorium, nobody has ever said that that isn't an important city building, and it isn't to have a future in the city. I think the question is, what is the future? But there is maintenance that needs to be done, and that's not going to go away. You either have to invest in it, make use of it, or eventually it'll fall apart. It is a good building. We're not saying, you know, we're saying we could look at putting a city hall in, in that main floor, the space, to make it work. I'm not sure how much money we would save. It's, is, is a lot of issues that would come along with that, but it could happen. But I think the community feeling, everything that I've heard, nobody's ever said they want to get rid of the city auditorium. But you have a building, and what is the use of it? And if you're using the building, it's easy to spend money on maintenance. But if you're not, if it doesn't serve a functional purpose, it's really hard to budget maintenance that, that's, that's needed in buildings. Buildings depreciate, just like automobiles. And, you know, you can, you can fix it up if you want to, but you, if, if it's really working for you, it's much easier to, to budget money for maintenance. Are you any questions of, on any of these?
So I think what we've got in front of us is we've got a comparison of our existing facility, the East Highway 12 site. And I believe that when Mr. Holland and I met on Thursday, the council could say that, yeah, we want to select one of these sites, or you want to, want for us to consider an additional site, to look at something different. But the, the desire is to know what you, as the council, wants, and what you're hearing from your constituents, and on what direction we need to go. This is kind of a two-phase process. If we choose to go with the facility, then, and you would like to go into closed session to talk about a specific, or even if you want to talk about both sites in closed session, to hear the numbers that, and give direction to staff, we certainly could do that. But it's up to the council at this point what they wish to do, so. Were you, to the point where you're taking questions at this point?
I think that's appropriate, yes.
So I guess at this point, it would be an open conversation. On the consideration is the site selection for new city hall. And Mr. Holland, was there anything you wanted to add?
I would just say, first of all, thank you, Mayor, and I think you summarized it very well. I think tonight, if you pick either A or B site, the next step would be for us to come back, working with the architects with at least two concepts for whatever site you select. So I guess what I'm saying is, don't think of tonight as, well, I've picked site A or I've picked site B, and, and, you know, I'm locked into this or whatever. We're, we're still going to do some due diligence, and we're still going to have to negotiate, you know, property, possibly on both sites. And so we'll have to come back with some prices. And so we'll come back and say, here's, you know, three different options for site A, for example. But I do, I, I would recommend, let's, let's go with one site tonight. Let's not say I come up with multiple drawings for, you know, A and B. Let's not do that, because then now we have nine choices. We'll make our, our decision process even worse. So my, my recommendation is that, can we come to a consensus tonight as a council? Do you want to go with site A or site B? And it'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the downtown site for our future site for the city hall.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the downtown site as the site selection for our new city hall. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
May not be germane, but, Mr. Ingin, what, you had talked about guiding the ship in the planning process through this, and you say you want to start with the easiest or the biggest picture, and you've identified site. In your mind, what would be the next steps if we select, if this motion were to pass? What do you see that map look like?
I think Mr. Holland mentioned one thing. If you involve buying any properties or anything, that would be a thing that they would want to get that information. But I think the next planning issue that we would look at is really, how does a city hall work on the site you're selecting? I, I would support what Mr. Holland said. You don't want to look at two sites simultaneously. We can get endlessly complex. I think we want to focus on a site and get into it. We would come back with, he mentioned two approaches, but there's multiple approaches right up front. We can look at several different ways of, of doing it. And once again, when we look at the building, we're not looking at finished rendering looks. That'll be a diagram of how the spaces and functions, we can circulate, how we can go, and we may have some special things of how it would fit with the, with the neighborhood. But it would be a site study, specifically how the building fits in that, right in that location, how the buildings would jive together if it's, if it follows that one. And, you know, so you'd have something, and maybe we'll look at two. And, you know, so you'd have something, and maybe we'll look at two different ways how we could organize. Inside the building, there's many more decisions. You know, what are the, where does the public come? You know, I think when you're looking at security, and security is sort of under, behind us at all of these buildings now, we, the first way to handle security is to make it so the majority of people don't have to go all the way through the building. You know, so you can get ninety percent of the people, come in the front door and they can meet their needs within twenty-five feet. And that can happen. And then how the departments are located in the building.
Just to follow up, for that site study part, and you're talking about those things?
Yes, absolutely.
How much time do you dedicate to something like that?
We could come back in a couple of weeks. You know, it really always depends on when it is and what's going on, but, you know, I think, I think we'd want to, we were anticipating this project would be moving a little at a different pace, and I think we could pick up a pace. I think that would be appropriate.
Counselor Nelson.
Thank you.
Followed by Christensen.
I am hesitant to vote yes on the motion that's on the table right now. I like the mayor's suggestion about exploring some costs with both sites before we decided that. I think we have an opportunity that we could perhaps do that in closed session to talk about that. I am supportive of a new city hall. I'm not sure that, how it has been described to be downtown, what it would be included, that's why I'm hesitant with that. To tear down the current city hall and rebuild in that footprint is one thing, to buy another vacant building downtown is a second question for me. And I am undecided with that. And I do think that East Highway 12 presents some interesting options, if we talked about a government complex again. But what are the costs? And I'd like to hear more about that. I am concerned if we know what we need from a design standpoint, that whether we can fit downtown or not. I'm also concerned about preserving the historic auditorium and that we need to figure out what needs to take place there to have that historic preservation take place before we start talking about adding city hall onto it or in it or those types of things. So I don't think I can support the motion as it was offered right now, and I would encourage us to look at the cost for both locations before we make that decision.
Counselor Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to transparency, I think we owe it to the citizens of Willmar to have them decide whether or not we should do it by putting it on the ballot or given them a choice of the two locations. I think we owe it to the citizens. I mean, there were the number of people who were at the community meeting, fifty-one were there and seventeen were government employees, elected officials, and former elected officials, and one from out of town that voted with four dots. That doesn't represent the city like I would see, like to see the city represented. So before we choose a site tonight, I think we need a motion to direct the city attorney to dig into what it takes to put it on the ballot, the decision. We owe it to them, and we're always bragging about transparency, and fifty-one people minus seventeen isn't very transparent for the community. I too think down the road, we need a city hall. Don't get me wrong. It's probably well-needed down the road, but not this year. But I think we owe it to the public to let them weigh in on it. I talked to a lot of people and they, they use the term shove it down our throats. I've heard that several times and to do that, I would respectfully ask for the motion to be taken back.
Counselor Ploman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of this motion because I, first and foremost, I know that we need a new city hall. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's, I mean, we're trying to put a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid, and we can only do that for so long before it becomes foolish and irresponsible of us. So if in fact, we do need a new city hall, then we have to begin the process and we have to go through the conceptual steps. And I'm supportive of this because I believe that we're never going to get a good grasp of what these conceptual ideas are unless we just go ahead and take the information that we have and do as good a job as we can looking at, looking at the specifics of the project. I think, you know, this vote for myself isn't indicative of myself saying, here's thumbs up, let's spend the money, here's a blank check, and let's build a new city hall. This is just one more step in the process of taking a look at what this potential project could and would be. And I think that if we spent too much time asking the question, I mean, we're, you know, we'll be here forever. We'll kick the can years down the road even further, and we don't have that long with the building that we currently have. And so like I said, my support kind of revolves around that, not necessarily saying that I, that I fully support the project a hundred percent. It's just we don't even have a solid enough picture of even what to support at this point. So we have to make the decisions to get us there, and I believe this is the wise way to do it.
Counselor Osmond, followed by Mesky.
Okay. I initially was adamant and felt very strongly that it should be downtown. My concern now is that we would be cobbling three buildings together and try to make something work, where if we have a fresh site with the opportunity to go in and build it the way it needs to get built and to serve the public, is a better, I'm leaning that way as a better idea. And for the future, with other possibilities for a larger site that isn't landlocked, that has plenty of parking, if that was available downtown, I would love it. But it doesn't seem possible. So I would personally probably lean towards something with larger acreage and outside of downtown, and then we can preserve and do what we need to do for the auditorium and find a use for that separate than the city offices. And again, I'm just thinking of what's going to serve the public. And to have an easily accessible, functioning building, to me, for the next fifty years is more important. And I think about what business and purposes that they have to do, and I guess I'm not convinced that that has to be downtown for what they, what they need to take care of. So I'm leaning for a different site.
Counselor Mesky.
I'm at a loss, because we're, we can't even come to a consensus on the council of what it is. We had set forth on this vision that we were going to engage the public and talk about a location, and we did that. And who shows up makes the votes. I mean, that's how it works. And so I thought, I'm prepared to go with what the majority of the public wanted to do and then move on. And I was going to suggest, I mean, and you're not going to like this as, as the person who said you thought I'd go faster, because I was going to slow it down even again and say, and then we're going to talk about functionality and do a site study, and I would assume that when we did that, I would go back again and do another forum with the public and say, does this meet the needs of the public and engage that way? That's how I envisioned the process going, is a planning step, engage the public. Planning step, engage the public, and then, because we're narrowing it down at each step, which I think is good. And so I don't know if it needs to necessarily go on a ballot question if you're bringing everybody along through the process. But if we're going to, every time it gets to the point, we're going to open it up for more, then we really should be having a retreat as a council to make sure we're on the same page, because we have to make this work. And what it's doing right now, it seems like every time we take two steps forward, there's one step back, and it feels fairly disorganized and uncomfortable. Because I thought we had a plan, at least maybe it was my misunderstanding of a plan of how we were going to proceed. And every time we moved in that direction, we are easily pulled off of course. And so I'm at a loss at this point.
Make a comment? You know, one approach, and the way we envisioned it originally, is for you to approve a project, you obviously need the site, you need a written program. This is our building, you know, offices, departments, including the size description, just a written description of it and how many square feet and such. And then at least a diagram of how it would fit, or ultimately what it would look like on the site where it's going. Maybe in an appropriate way, you have a building facility committee. We could have a facility committee meeting, and we guide through a written program so we can come through. You know, I think that the reason we have a representative democracy is to make decisions, you know, and it's wonderful if everybody can participate in every decision, but, you know, it takes a lot of time to educate everybody on everything, and you're representing them. So I think the council has, you've got the authority to use your judgment and make decisions. But I think we could come back, maybe it's a work session of the council here, but I think. Well, we have a motion on the table, so. Okay. Yeah. Work on the motion, we're not going to. No, you have a motion on there, but with, continuing with that motion, we would come back with a written program, plan of the building, and we could even have a sketch of it or something. And it just is one option, and we can do some more options, but at least then we get a little farther down the road to see where you're going. I mean, I like what you said, Counselor Mesky, is that we take the step, we evaluate. We take a step, we evaluate. I mean, I think that's what we've all been talking about wanting to do, is we want that public input. And I mean, Counselor Christensen, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really like what Counselor Osmond's brought up. Instead of working with an open site and two existing buildings to tie them together, I mean, that's, it's like remodeling. It can cost a lot of money, and I agree that if it's going to be built somewhere, I think it should be brand-new, one spot, wherever that spot is. But up to now, we're just, we've been talking about where to put it. The planning of it is another six months or so down the road. I mean, that, that's going to take more time. But it's important where it goes, and planning it, it's a lot easier to plan a brand-new building and put everything in place, new parking, than taking two old buildings and tying into a new one and worry about a leaky roof or how many steps down from one building to the next, put an elevator in one so we can get to the top floor of the other one. I mean, some of that, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense when you're spending money for a new facility. So yeah, I applaud your bringing that up. I didn't think of that, and I should have, being a contractor, but it makes a lot of sense. Build something new, and I don't know how many city halls have been built in the last five years in outstate Minnesota, but I'll bet it's a dozen. And I've seen a couple of them, and most of them are on a brand-new site, and they look really nice, presentable. And it's a lot easier for an architect to come up, the sky's the limit there. You don't have to work with, how are we going to attach this building to this one? And parking, you know, a new building, if we're going to have more things going on at city hall, we're going to need more parking. So yeah, I applaud your view of how you look at that.
Counselor Swann.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I honestly believe that if you look at the presentation that was given, it makes the downtown site the most clear site, for all kinds of reasons that are buried in there. But I feel really strongly that the new city council should be located downtown. A city's downtown is the heart of any community. Its vibrancy is a reflection of the commitment a city has to itself. If city hall is not located downtown, then what message does it send to others? I ask that the next time you go downtown, you look with intention at the successful businesses and organizations, and you know what you'll see? You'll see that it's home to several public buildings, and that includes two county facilities, the courthouse, and what I call their customer service facility on Benson Avenue. You're going to find WAC, the Willmar Fire Station, the auditorium, and the post office. There are law firms, accounting firms, banks, financial services. There are churches, nonprofits like the United Way. We have restaurants and a coffee shop. We have long-term businesses like Peterson Shoes and Peterson Funeral Home. We have an interior design studio and all kinds of other retail establishments that, if I'm sure if I tried naming them, I'm going to leave all kinds of folks out. It's home to compassionate care, to Divine House and all of their affiliates, to the medical facilities, including Rice Hospital, Caris Health, Family Practice. There are organizations that have made new commitments and investments into downtown, like the New Rehab Facility Center that Rice Hospital just did. Remodeling the Barn Theater, the Foxhole, the Midtown Plaza, the Legacy Building that's now being built on First Street, and what is soon to be built in Quick Trips. And then what about the wonderful enhancement we just did at Rice Park, right, and the splash pad on the skirts of downtown? It's a cultural hub of our community. It's within walking distance for those who live downtown or are in the fringes. It's accessible by bike, it's accessible by public transportation, because we have CCT Bus Stop downtown. There's a lot going on downtown, and if you don't believe me, just try getting a parking lot there over lunch, because it's not easy. I believe that we should relocate the city hall in the Hardware Hank Building, and I know that tonight is just choosing a site and not necessarily that building or another, but I'm going to say it anyway. It abuts to the auditorium, and we can capture synergy from co-locating in the two buildings. The auditorium is in desperate need of repair, just as Mr. Engen said. If we don't do something with it sooner than later, it will run the risk of being demolished, and that is just not acceptable. If we spend eight million dollars, and I just throw that out as a figure, today to renovate it, as a standalone structure, we have an underutilized building the taxpayers just paid eight million dollars to repair, just because it's too nice of a building to let go. If we co-locate, we can share expenses like the elevator and the other public spaces. Staff offices can be included in the auditorium. It becomes a complex of city bustle. With the additional space, we can incorporate Rack Eight and IT, just as was referenced in the presentation, or we could have the EDC join us alongside of the Planning and Development Department, which makes perfect sense. It would be synergistic. The Hardware Hank Building is a great structure. The exterior walls are in excellent condition. There are no load-bearing walls to limit us on what we could do with the interior design. With little imagination, that building could be transformed into an attractive building with a main entrance or an atrium where the garage sits right now, and that was something that was envisioned when we were in that building the last time. When we tear down the current city hall, it allows for new sightlines to the Hardware Hank Building. It also creates ample parking for staff visitors and community events, and it would alleviate parking pressure for downtown. I have heard community members say that if we located on Highway 12, it would show that we're progressive, and I know that didn't come up in discussion today, but knowing that that's a comment out in the public, I want to address that. So if it shows that moving to Highway 12 shows that we're progressive by inviting people who are traveling from the east, meaning the Twin Cities, I ask, who are we here to serve? I'm certainly open to inviting new businesses and new residents from the east, but I think our first obligation should be to serve those who built this community over the years. Do we really need to be on Highway 12 to be progressive? I believe that the progressiveness of the city is a reflection of the ideas and the collaborative efforts that bring forth innovation, innovative ideas to fruition. It's the quality of customer service and the welcomingness that happens within city hall. A new facility will help us attract and retain our employees in addition to providing an efficient facility to provide those services. We can show we are progressive by being located in such a facility downtown. The Highway 12 property is a great piece of property. It's a large piece of property, and it's perfect for an organization or a company that relies on high traffic and high visibility. That is not a requirement of city hall. We. We talk about co-locating, but we already have heard from the MUC that that's not a necessity. We don't need that much space. So let's keep that wonderful piece of property on the tax rolls and let a new development that really needs that location and that piece of property to develop there. There was an article in today's paper about Main Street, the program that we recently paid dues to re-up our membership to, right? And I understand from that meeting, there was really good discussion and excitement at the meeting. And the people were literally asked to step out in good faith to provide leadership by becoming new members on that board. Now, here we are, days later. The ink is not hardly dry on that newspaper article, and we ourselves are talking about leaving downtown. What is the message that we're sending? This just does not make sense to me. For those who say, not now, and let's wait, I ask, wait for what? Another water leak that costs the city an additional $100,000 in repair? Someone to get sick from the mold in the building, or for someone else to get stuck in an old elevator? Every dollar that we spend on heating and cooling costs due to an inefficient building? Money that we spend on repairs and maintenance and replacement are dollars that we could otherwise invest in a new building that will be virtually maintenance-free for the first how many years? Past councils recognized the need for a new City Hall, but they pulled the plug twice. One of those times was the old First Bank Building. The city didn't move on it, but the county did. The county has a great building now, and it meets their needs very well. I'd rather not repeat that mistake. The Hardware Hank Building is available today. I believe that this is the right time, the right location, and we need to step up and do what we are elected to do. Make the tough decision, because it's the right thing to do. And I believe we belong downtown in the Hardware Hank Building.
Any final comments? Councilmember Christiansen, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard a great picture being painted. However, that picture of downtown isn't shared by many people in this city. I think if we gave the citizens the option of anywhere but downtown, you'd have more votes in other places, not necessarily the east side. I've heard a lot of talk from many people the last two weeks about, why not the mall? It's there. Rick brought that up four, five, six years ago, the last time we considered a City Hall. And it makes so much sense. We don't have to worry about parking. It's there. Don't have to worry about the roof. The owner's got to fix it. Or we purchase part of it, draw a boundary line, and put City Hall there. I just don't like the idea of tying into older buildings for City Hall and then parking downtown if it's going to be in the Hardware Hank Building. It's just, where do you park out front to go in there? You can park around the block. And you know how people want to park in front of the store? They won't walk two blocks to go somewhere. And if I'm not mistaken, the Hardware Hank Building has almost three times the square footage as our present City Hall. It's a lot more. And I know we can move the Rack Eight over there and maybe a few other departments, but it's more space than what we need. And then when you connect it to the auditorium, and I believe it's from their second floor, the auditorium is, what, one step, 10 inches, 12 inches, something like that?
Nine.
Nine inches? You know, it isn't a perfect fit. But if we're going to do one, I say build new somewhere. You painted a really good picture. There's no doubt about it. But I'm not convinced that it should be attached to, or in an old building and remodel it just because it's downtown. Yeah, I agree with Julie. Just start fresh somewhere else, or go to the mall.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I still, I made this statement before, that we don't have the cost figures. What will it cost us to remodel a building? Sometimes you might think you want to remodel your home or remodel a building, and it ends up being more expensive than doing a new one. Where will we be at with that? I think the other thing I have a concern about is, yeah, people voted to stay downtown. But the options were not, it did not say we are buying Hardware Hank and tearing down the other one. It did not say that we were relocating City Hall on its current location. So there's some options there that people voted for that may be totally different if they hear what our plan is with that. Yes, we have to make the decision. But we, when we went through that Hardware Hank Building, one of the statements was made was, is this, does this, will this meet the needs of this community for the next 20 years, the next 40 years? Or are we trying to do a quick fix? Is this what we need, you know, with that? That's a concern I have. What would it cost us to locate on Highway 12 if we were to buy, you know, to do that? I still think we need some more information regarding the costs with that. What are we going to put in City Hall? Do we need the Hardware Hank Building? Do we need, how much space do we need? We're back to that. I understand we have to make a decision. I do not support the motion that's on the table, and I am hoping that we can get to some actual costs. And perhaps we can do that still in closed session tonight, to have an understanding of what it would cost on one site versus the other with that. The other concern I have is the current condition of our building. I've had people ask me the question, you know, have you done environmental study? How bad is it? Are your employees safe in there? We just renewed a lease for the people in the lower level. And yet, we're telling people that it's not fit to be in there. We need a new City Hall. But I think we also have a responsibility to be proactive with the conditions in our building now. Have we, what do we do? I can't answer those questions, because I don't know that. But I'm hoping for more information on the costs before we make a decision.
Well, what we can do is, we could find out what the cost, or potential costs, or anticipated costs are of the land. We can't talk about the cost of the building. That has to be done in a public process. So if you want to talk about cost of the building, that has to be done in a public process. If you're talking about land conveyance, or purchasing land, or selling land, that can be done in a closed session, because that's setting strategy for the council. So you and I talked earlier today, maybe I misunderstood your question, but I just heard you say right now is that you want the total cost of what it would cost to do a building downtown, total cost of doing a building on Highway 12 estimate. I understand it's estimate. I thought you were asking about the cost of what the property could potentially be.
I think that's a place to start, is the cost of the land with that. Because if we have $1 million invested before we start, you know, what could we do for that same?
Sure. So if the council wanted to, with the motion on the table, I believe, could we go into closed session with the motion on the table, or would we have to act on the motion?
No. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you would have to act on your motion first.
Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwantus, for your comments. We share a different vision of downtown, or they offer an alternative vision. Because I think some people that I was listening to were talking about taking the existing City Hall and moving them out temporarily while they actually demolished it and built new on that site. So I mean, there are other options that are in the downtown idea. And in the plan, that was very clear, because there were options on that. It was more of that block. And so I would support this motion, but we have lots of discussions to have about exactly what that's going to be. We own the property that it's on. And that's a piece that you didn't have in there, is that the city owns the property there, and I'm not having to buy property if we already own it. But all the other things, stormwater retention, soil corrections, parking, all that other stuff you mentioned, are clear benefits that would piggyback with a lot of the reasons that Councilmember Schwantus was talking about a downtown site. I'm one of those that, I'm willing to start with the site, but there is a lot of other planning pieces that I want to have some discussion about as we move forward. And so I know a lot of folks want to have shovels in the ground in six months or whatever. For me, I would like to put a date. I mean, we'll talk about building a building in 2021, and then fill in all of these gaps. Because right now, I'm telling you, it seems like, I mean, I know we're elected to make these decisions, but we'd like to have the public's input, because that's who's going to use this. It feels like we are in all different places, and it's very frustrating minimally. It could be destructive to move forward when you have so many people wanting to move in different directions. It's so, for me, it's a cautionary thing, is proceed slowly, thoroughly, and make sure that everybody is on board with where we're going, and get as much buy-in from not just the council and the public as you can. So any way that can happen, I am going to support it. But those that think that we can actually put shovels in the ground still this year, it's a pipe dream, and that's not going to happen.
I'm for the location downtown. I think that's where people can come to congregate, to work with the public government, their government. I'm not crazy about going out on Highway 12. I think, I think for the right entrepreneur, the right businessperson, there's an opportunity to build a small mall there and get the traffic from crossing from the hotel over there, doing some business. And I think it would be a shame to take something like that off the tax rolls. So I believe that we should not do that. And I think we should, like Councilmember Mesky indicated, hear what the, maybe the vision might be with the removal of the old building, putting something new. Hear what it might be down there. I don't know if we take the Hardware Hank Building. I don't know if we build a new building and just improve on the auditorium and not have a joint building there. We just have one new building on the old site. I don't know. But my preference would be to stay downtown.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put a wrench in this discussion. I'm not for Highway 12, because I can't see you taking good prime commercial property off the market for a City Hall. I would have preferred to look at a couple other sites. One would be at the courthouse, the southwest corner, Sixth and Trot. Because if they ever move out, we're going to be stuck with the library, so we could build City Hall right adjacent to the library. Or else, Litchfield Avenue, and I think like Ninth Street, where the old Taco John's property, the MUC owns it, build the City Hall there. And worst-case scenario, we could do like the MUC wants to do, build City Hall at the Public Works Garage. So there's some other options.
Well, I think we're all over the board. I don't think we have consensus. Are we ready to vote? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
No.
Nelson?
No.
Christiansen?
No.
Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmond?
No.
Mesky?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays.
Four, four vote. Next on the agenda is the city administrator comments.
Thank you, Mr. Engin, Andy and Richard. Thank you. I just have one announcement. I am a Rotarian, and tomorrow night, it's going to be a beautiful night at Rockin' Robins. It's our first of four events. I know that all of you know that, but I've been asked to do this, so hopefully it'll get out a little further. But tomorrow night, I will be out there. I'll be driving the golf cart. If you need a ride from your vehicle up to the front, I will gladly give you a ride. So hopefully everyone will participate. Boy, it was a huge success last year, and I think a lot of it had to do with the weather. And so hopefully, we'll have good weather again this year, and we've got some great bands, and you know, the profits from that, those concerts help provide the beautiful entry sign to Rockin' Robins and to Robins Island. So please encourage everyone to come out to that tomorrow night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarado, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that we have our election judges in place. I'm very excited about that. We've got a big year ahead of us, so it's good to have them in place. Thank you for the mention of the Rockin' Robins. I believe we have a candidate's forum for the sheriff's, sheriff's candidates forum coming up on, was it, I believe it's on Wednesday, the 18th. So I think that's something the public should check out. And then there's a car wash for the food shelf, and that's on the 17th. And another fundraiser for the food shelf at Near Park, part of our community, at Near, yeah, I just said Near Park. So I think the tickets are $25 for that. And then there's a pig out and all kinds of good things going on there. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmond.
I'll pass.
Councilmember Mesky?
Pass.
Councilmember Palmer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
I pass.
Councilmember Nelson?
Pass.
Councilmember Christiansen?
See you all tomorrow night.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Amen. Thank you.
Entertainer most adjourned.
Some of...
Were adjourned.